Hey, everybody, everybody. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Yes, it is a Monday night once again. Yes, it is Monday, April 11th, 2022. Welcome to Raging Chickens Out to Coop Live. This, of course, is Kevin Mahoney, creator and founder of Raging Chicken. On Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists, and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards and from across the country. You can also join us at the end of the week for our Friday Politics Roundup, where we break down the good, the bad, and the ugly in state and national politics. And you can check out the Wednesday show with Cyril Mikulakow. Cyril's a progressive columnist from Bucks County Courier Times, an intelligencer, and the newly appointed editor-in-chief of the Bucks County Beacon. Yes, Cyril and I get together about once a month, maybe more, to drill down into Bucks County, Pennsylvania, and international politics. You can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcast on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts. You can help support this show right now by becoming a patron for as little as $5 a month. Head on over to patreon.com/RCpress and choose your membership level. And you can help out the show without even having to contribute a dime. Head on over to our YouTube channel if you're not there already. Smash that subscribe button, like the stream for this show, and hit that notification bell so you know every time that we go live. And you can check out and hop on our Discord server. info on that is in today's show notes. And for more PA progressive talk, tune to The Rick Smith Show's livestream at 9:00 PM Eastern, his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook, wherever you get your streams, he's there. And subscribe to his podcast wherever you get your podcasts. Just go to thericksmithshow.com for the latest across all his platforms. And if you haven't already, I don't know where you've been. Season two of Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast is flooding your streams. So get on over there, right? And we've got one of those members here tonight, I have to say, which I'm very excited. The amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast rock the house. And they know where the bodies are buried. Make sure to follow them on Twitter at @thenightcaucus. That's @thenightcaucus on Twitter. And subscribe to their podcasts on Anchor, Spotify, iTunes, or wherever you get your podcasts. And for all you gamers out there, The Game In, that's with two N's. The Game In is a Quaker Town-based, black family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show, and they've got everything from retro N64s to latest consoles, video games for all platforms, collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops. Yeah, all the stiff stuff that you need to kind of clutter up your house, they've got it. Yes, indeed. And if kids got A's at their report card, yep, they get a discount. Want more information? Head on over to the Facebook page, follow them on Twitter at @TheGameIn. If you've got a question about a game, looking for something hard to get, shoot them a message or drop them an email at thegameinpa@gmail.com. And a special shout-out, as always, goes to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, "There Are No People in the Future." Check out all his great stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @songadayman. That is @songadayman on Twitter. A special show note for Out to Coop Live. Next week, we're still kind of up in the air. We might do an open phones session, or we might... I'm working on thinking about doing a Bucks County roundup. I'm not quite sure yet. I've got a bunch of kind of irons in the fire for next week. But I do want to say on April 25th, that is two weeks from tonight, Daisy Pickin will be joining us on the show to talk about her new book, On the Line. Yes, it's a story of class, solidarity, and two women's epic struggle to build a union. It's a absolutely phenomenal book, and she will be here on the 25th of April at 7:00 PM. But that's then, and this is now. On tonight's episode of Out to Coop Live, I welcome back to the program Shanna Danielson. Shanna is a middle school music teacher in South Central PA. She's a former candidate for state senate and statehouse and a 2019 graduate of Eberge, PA. Shanna currently serves as Secretary of the Democratic Party of York County, vice chair of the Northern York Democratic Club, a member of the Democratic State Committee for York County, an elected auditor for Carroll Township, and has recently been appointed as a Southern Region Pace Director for PSEA. And of course, Shanna is one of those awesome co-hosts of Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast. Yes, Shannon lives in Dillsburg with her husband, son, and many cats, which I hope some of them will make themselves known this evening, I have to say. And in tonight's show, we're going to be digging into the teacher shortage in Pennsylvania and across the nation. We'll talk about some of the conditions that are driving more and more teachers to leave the profession and fewer and fewer students choosing to become teachers. Yes, COVID, of course, exacerbated these conditions, but the crisis in our public education system runs much deeper. Shanna, welcome to the show.
Thank you. It's nice to be back.
I am so psyched to have you back on the show. I still go back, I've actually just recently listened. Before we kind of were talking about tonight's show, I went back and listened to the show the last time we had a kind of Raging Chickens Sisters of the Night Caucus. So I think it was Angela was on with you, and that was such an awesome show. And then, thinking back to those debriefs that we had did about the, you know, the last election cycle, which was wild. So it was, it was perfect timing because I'm like, man, I just gotta have Shanna back on the show. And then, here we are, yay! So let me ask, let's, I think, again, we're talking about the teacher shortage and the kind of this crisis that we're kind of seeing both Pennsylvania and across the nation. But let me just start kind of a little closer to home a little bit. I mean, you know, so you're kind of went back to teaching after kind of running for office, right? As hard as I've seen anybody run for office. And back to teaching music, I mean, just maybe we could start, well, what has that experience been like, heading back into the classroom as well?
Yeah, it's been a lot. So I took, I will say, I took the rest of the school year off after the 2020 election. You recall that I resigned from my previous position to focus on the campaign. And also, it was a pandemic, and so like, nobody was really able to properly teach music anyway. And my school district at that time, where I worked, was toxic and just not, not a good place to be, even if I wasn't trying to run for office. So, you know, we lost, which was garbage. But I don't, I don't regret what we did, even now. But I took, I took a couple of months to just catch my breath. Running for office is always hard. Running for office as a parent and a woman is really hard. Running for office during a pandemic was a level of hard that I was not prepared for. And honestly, there are days where I feel like I'm still tired from 2020. Just, I stop and think like, all the things that have happened in the last couple of years. And what? Did this, really? Like, really? Did all of this happen? So it took a couple of months and honestly, just tried to decide, like, do I want to go back into the classroom? And silly me, you know, last summer, COVID numbers were coming down. And I thought like, okay, well, maybe, maybe if I'm gonna go back, like, this is an okay time to do it. I didn't want to teach during, during that first full year during, you know, I was teaching when the world shut down. And then I thought like, oh, this is gonna be the worst year ever to teach 2021. Like, no way. That's gonna be too much. And so I didn't have to deal with the hybrid schedules or the teaching on Zoom other than those first couple of months, right when things shut down. So I thought to myself like, okay, well, this year's gonna kind of be normal. And I can handle this, like, I can do this. Got a job doing exactly what I wanted to do, which was beginning an early middle school band. And, you know, that's, that's what I love. That's why I became a teacher, to do those, those very specific things. So I thought like, this is perfect. And then, you know, numbers started to spike a little bit, like, right as the school year was, was getting off to a bumpy start. And then the mask mandate came. And I was personally grateful for the mask mandate because I was wearing a mask anyway. And...
So you, when you were going back, you went to back in the, in the fall, there was no mandate at that point at your school? It was, it came in once you started?
Nowhere, well, I shouldn't say nowhere, but most schools in South Central PA did not have mandatory masking. It was optional until the governor issued his declaration in September, or whenever that was. And then immediately, I mean, like, you know what has happened everywhere, right? Is the, the community response from not the entire community, but from enough people that it has just made this year. You know, I didn't teach last year, so I don't have the personal comparison to say compared to last year. But everyone I work with, who I talk to, says that this year is worse. And it's worse because it's, we're still very much dealing with the pandemic, except everyone wanted to just pretend it was over. And so everything has to be normal now. Teach exactly the way you would have taught before. Oh, what's that? Half your class is out on quarantine? Don't care. Expectations are, are the same. And it also comes with this increased scrutiny from the community that I think I had certainly never had to deal with in my career. I'll tell a brief story. Our district has new teachers come to, I think I've told you this before, come to a, a school board meeting at the beginning of the year to introduce ourselves. And, you know, my name is blah, 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 and I went to college here, and I have this many children, like, whatever, just like a cordial hello to the school board and the parents. And the first teacher to get up was yelled at by a parent in the audience who said, "Take your mask off so we could see your face." And the teacher respectfully declined and said, "I'll keep it on, thank you." And they booed her. They booed her. And the board and the administrators just sat there and didn't say anything. They just let it happen.
That must be maddening, that part of it. I mean, it's bad enough to have a parent come up and do that in kind of public and set a tone for everything else that's about to follow. But to have to be a clear message that your superiors, your bosses, superintendents do not have your back in that.
And that's exactly what it felt like, you know, for that teacher and then all the rest of us who had to go up after and endure that same climate. And it took, you know, there was like a brief kind of scuttle of an apology, like, right after the meeting that we had to sit through, the duration of, and listen to all the parents tell us we're child abusers because we wanted our, you know, we were gonna follow the mask mandate. But it took two weeks for the admin to, to send an email to those of us who were at that meeting to apologize. And, and that same feeling of like, not like betrayal, but just, but just like, I don't even know what word I want to use to describe it. This just emptiness of like, if my administrators don't have my back in this environment, who does? Has been like the dark cloud kind of hanging over the whole school year. So I don't want to say the whole thing, doom and gloom, the kids are great. The kids are going through something I cannot imagine going through as a middle schooler. You know what I mean? I look at my own son, who is in second grade, and I cannot imagine experiencing what these kids are dealing with when I was that age. And so, you know, the kids are wonderful. And I teach band, which is like the most fun, awesome thing to teach. But also, like, I nicknamed flutes murder tubes because they're just blowing all these aerosols directly in your face, you know? And, you know, we've been lucky. We've been relatively lucky. None of my ensembles have been super-spreader events. And, you know, masking has been so relaxed. We've hardly had any reported cases in the county where I teach. So it, it does feel a little better now, but you can't undo what the year has been. And we have 29 student days left of this year. And I gotta tell you, it, it feels like it's gone by in a flash, but also like, it's been the longest year of my life.
I'm so glad you said that. That's a sentiment that I hear, I mean, I certainly experience almost exactly like that at, you know, teaching at university level. But my friends who are teachers express kind of a version of what you just said, right? It just kind of say like, God, I can't believe we're here already, but like, oh my God, it took forever to get here, but it feels like it went in a flash. But let me ask you, you mentioned this stuff, you know, so you weren't there for last year. I'm curious about those teachers that were there and the stories that are told about kind of coming back. Because I can imagine, I certainly have felt this sentiment, you know, kind of in, in, in my work. But it's like the sense that, you know, that first year, that first full year, it's kind of like, it's a mentality of you're just, you're just gonna, you're just gonna trudge through it, right? You're gonna plow through it to get through, and you know that it's gonna take a year, and it's a struggle, but you're gonna do that. But then after that, to come back and to have this around, it seems, you know, I feel like a lot of folks' energy is just depleted, right? And there's like, I, I don't know if you'd use these words, but I mean, like, just this kind of, like, almost like a process of grieving for the time of the past year and having to come back and then find out that you're on your own.
And that's exactly what it is. It's the, it's the "you're on your own." And, and not to put that on any one person, because I don't think we can, but I just feel like the societal expectation in this country has been, "We spent too much time on this, and we don't have time, and it's not good for the bosses." So like, "Make us some money now, people." And I realize that's not entirely how it works in education. But it is just, you know, you read story after story. Every teacher you talk to will tell you a very similar, you know, feeling, where it's, last year, there was an understanding that we are going through something. We are having this collective experience right now with our students, with, you know, with our families, with our communities. And it's almost like on that first day of school, it was just kind of expected like, well, we're done with that now, right? So, you know, we went all of last year not getting COVID, which was great. And then my son got it. I tested positive on my birthday in October. Yeah, happy birthday to me. And we're, you know, fully vaccinated, and it was still four days of absolute garbage. I still don't have my taste and smell all the way back. It's been five months. And I burned through my entire allotment of PTO. All my sick days, my personal days, it was all gone by October. So like, not only are you going through this traumatic thing of getting this illness and then also like the pressure, you know, we did everything right, didn't matter. And I know you've experienced this too.
Both my kids, yep, exactly.
You know, and, but then also to have to go through an entire school year then with no days. I can't just take a day off if I'm tired. I don't have a day to take. I had to take a couple of days unpaid. My son got the flu because this year wasn't crazy enough. He got the flu maybe six or seven weeks ago and was in the hospital. So I had to take days with no pay. So not only is my son, you know, going through this trauma, and I'm trying to figure out how the hell I'm gonna pay these hospital bills and meet our crazy deductible. Then also, it's, oh, and you're, you're gonna have your pay docked. Sorry about that. You know, last year, there were those COVID emergency days.
Rules are rules!
Yep. This year, my school district did not push for that. And my union is, my local, I should say, my local is not particularly strong. And they did not push for an MOU for, you know, for those COVID days to be added again. And, and they could have, and they didn't. And so, you know, that just kind of adds to it. And that's the thing this year is, again, I didn't teach last year, so I am not claiming to be an expert on the differences. However, all of the extra little supports that were in place, and honestly, just the understanding that, that this is weird and we're all in this together, that's gone. There is no "we're all in this together" anymore. There's empty platitudes, and there's, we just had an in-service where the administrators asked us, you know, "What's, what's standing in the way of your motivation?" And it's like, what isn't?
You! How about you?
Right? You know, in some respects, I'm grateful that a couple of weeks ago, we did have an in-service because it got to the point where I think my superintendent realized there's something really wrong. The staff is feeling a lot of feelings, and like, we gotta talk about this. And so I, I will give credit where credit is due, that they, they took time. They pushed for a virtual instruction day, so the kids all learned from home while we had staff time. And we talked about this. We talked about it in our buildings and in our departments, and they listened to what we said. And it was, it was both reaffirming and also incredibly depressing to hear how many of my colleagues said the same exact things that I've been feeling. You know, we don't feel like we have any support in the community. If they don't think we're pedophiles or child abusers, they think that we are indoctrinating and racist. And, you know, and, and we clearly do not get paid enough for this. And I read a really interesting thing about how, or maybe it was, it was on a podcast I was listening to, the Have You Heard podcast, it's like Jack Schneider and Jen, okay? Where they were talking about how teachers used to feel this sense of, of like moral payment, almost. You know, like, we get paid like jack shit, however, we feel so good about what we do because we know how important it is that it almost makes up for how little we get paid. And we're not feeling that anymore. So we feel like we're getting a pay cut. You know, and it's everywhere. And I said this in that Penn Capital Star article, and I will say it to everyone who listens, we're not burning out, we're being burned. And that's, I stand by that.
100%. And that's like, that's, I mean, I hate to say that everything you've just laid out there is like, lays the predicate for that article. But in that piece, I, you know, I have, I, there was a fantastic piece by Marlee Parrish. I mean, she did a really great job of, of digging in and actually talking to teachers. And I, I mean, I thought, I mean, well, I mean, I'll ask you, but I mean, it seemed to me that teachers were kind of, their voices were really represented in that article in ways that you don't often get to see.
Yeah.
So, I mean, she writes that piece in part what you've just said. I mean, I mean, I think that, you know, when you just said you had this meeting, and then you hear everything that's affirming but then depressing because you realize how many other teachers are out there. And that also just kind of like hit me, and just in terms of the isolation of it, right? That, you know, you're doing this in a way that feels like you're doing it alone, but you're finding out you're doing it collectively. But then more so that this speaks to what we're starting to see now in the national media and in this Penn Capital Star piece about now, you know, Pennsylvania, you know, and really nationwide, we're starting to look at serious concerns about having a teacher shortage. So when you're looking at that, I mean, how would you kind of break down that, that, the reasons for that teaching shortage? As we saw both in that article, but just kind of more broadly. I mean, I know this is kind of your kind of, you know, lane, if you will.
Yeah, this is what, this is what is motivating me. And I don't, I don't mean for this to sound negative towards kids because it's not. But when I was a young teacher, I was so motivated by going to school and working with my kids and like, you know, getting the best sound out of the, my little elementary band that I could, and I'm still motivated by, by that. And my kids are awesome, and they make me laugh every day. And when they work hard and it pays off, as a quick aside, I just went to a conference this past week in the Poconos at Kalahari, actually, the Music Educators Conference. And I saw two of my former students from when I used to teach up in Cameron County that are in the All-State Band this year. They were among the best band kids in the whole state of Pennsylvania. And I hadn't seen these kids in six years, and I cried when I saw them because, you know. And so like, those things are obviously still motivating. However, I've reached this point in my career where I'm more motivated by like trying to figure out how to make this better for teachers. Because kids are great, and kids are always gonna be great. No matter what happens, kids are always gonna be great. And teachers like to teach because we love the kids. However, there's too much other stuff that's getting in the way of us being able to enjoy our jobs. This is not new. This has been happening for a long time. I feel like I graduated college in 2008, and it was already kind of starting. You could see the decline in people who were enrolling in teacher prep programs. And so we have kind of this twofold problem where not enough people want to be teachers, which I don't know if that has anything to do with how demonized we've been for, I don't know, ever. And the fact that we get paid absolute garbage because it's a mostly feminized workforce and women just, you know, according to lawmakers, we don't deserve to be paid as much. So, you know. Also, like, women used to just be funneled into teaching. And now, like, we can do whatever the hell they want, like, whatever the hell we want. We could do anything for a job. And so not as many people want to be teachers, and it is a reality we have to confront. So like, that's a big problem. There's like a, a real shortage of people even being trained to be teachers. But we also have this like, this, you know, problem happening at the same time where current teachers and people who did go to school to be teachers are getting the hell out because they can't take it anymore. And that is a relatively new-ish phenomenon. But it was starting to happen even before COVID, and it's just gotten so much worse because, I don't know, we've been through something traumatic, and we just realized like, we value our lives and our sanity and our mental health more than a paycheck sometimes. And if I could get paid more to do something else that I can leave there when I come home and fully commit myself to, you know, my family or my civic engagements or whatever, why would I continue to put myself through all this stress? And I think that's something, I mean, if, again, in that article, a lot of those folks have left teaching. I know so many people who have left teaching, and, and they're good friends of mine, you know? And I've thought about it. I've left quite a few times, but I keep coming back because I'm a glutton for punishment. I don't know. But, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, it's something that we really need to confront. But the good news, Kevin, is that Barb Glym has figured out how to solve the teacher shortage. I don't know if you saw this this week.
I did not see this. Please do tell.
She got in one of these Moms for Liberty Facebook groups and, and had this whole post about how, what we really need to solve the substitute teacher crisis, which that's a whole other thing we should talk about, by the way. Not only do we not have enough regular teachers, we don't have subs. And so then, we lose our plan periods because we're covering other people's classes. And the whole, I mean, they're, on coverage days, kids could have, instead of like their four normal teachers, they could have like eight or nine different people throughout the day.
I see it happen to my kids all the time.
It's absolutely crazy. Anyway, but Barb Glym has solved this problem because she says that we just need some good conservative parents to, to sign up as substitutes so that they can be the eyes and ears in our classrooms to weed out these teachers who are indoctrinating our children. You know, public, not, well, I don't want to say public, but she posted it, and there are screenshots. It's out there. This is Barb Glym's solution.
That's going in my book.
That'll...
Well, I'll tell you, you know, this is, and, you know, I mean, this has been one of the long-term, I mean, not to get us too far off track here, but this has been the long-term agenda of people like her. Right? It's like, it's never, and this is, you know, I always try to want to say, get this through some, the people's heads, right? You know, especially like the good liberals, right? You know, like, where they're like, you know, okay. When they're kind of like, well, you know, it's like, they just want to end private education or, or public education, and they want to, so, well, no, 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 that's not exactly what they want. They want public money to pay for their private education so they can have control over the Christian nationalist future of this country.
That's exactly it.
It's like, it is, it is, it does, they don't want you to go pay for the church school, right? They ultimately, and this is it, like, you know, this is what Alec was doing, this is what we saw with the Bradley Foundation, this is what we see with the Commonwealth Foundation, this is the charterization of public schools, it's all moved in that direction. And to see this now, and of course, you know, okay, you know, I don't want to kind of be too disparaging of, of, of people on the right. That's a lie. But that's, but, but, you know, it's like, okay, so I, I think about, like, you know, like, these creatures that always appear like in, whether it's fantasy or science fiction or fiction stuff, that, that feed off anger and despair, right? And what blows my mind is these people seem to be well-adapted, right? For the, the most despairing and hopeless times as a way to kind of gain more power.
Yeah.
And they, they don't miss a beat. Like, so when, when teachers are at the bottom, we're facing a national, like, like crisis, and somehow, these people are not exhausted, but they're feeding off us, right? To try to sweep in and to kind of convert public education from under our noses. It's incredible to me.
Yeah, we're all feeling the way we're feeling. And the, the, the scary thing about it, I think, is how well-organized the opposition is. And they're all showing up at the same, and they're, and they're reading the same talking points, and they're all pushing the same policies at, at like all of our schools, right? It's not, it's not just in York County or Adams County or Bucks County. Like, it's, it's like a, it's a well-coordinated playbook, right? We had a board member introduce a policy. Now luckily, it didn't pass yet, knock on wood, but introduce one of these, oh, there goes my kid, curriculum transparency bills, right?
This is one thing I wanted to talk about tonight, exactly. Because you have to, that piece too as well, yes.
So this particular policy was written, and again, I'm sure it's verbatim or close to verbatim what's been going around everywhere else. We would have to post everything we're using in our classrooms, everything. Websites, instructional materials, anything we wanted to use would have to be posted for the semester, like, before the semester begins. Which I'm like all about having your syllabus or whatever. But, but what this, what this would have done is if we would use something that we didn't have posted at least a week in advance, we would get a letter, like a disciplinary letter, and if we did it twice, we could get fired. So the example I like to use is, I teach a creative arts class to eighth grade that's called Beat. And so we do all kinds of like non-traditional percussion stuff. We did boom whackers, which are like these colorful tubes, and you hit them on stuff, and they make, they play different notes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're called boom whackers?
They're called boom whackers. Yes, they're super fun. Everyone should have some. They're not that expensive. And it's good stress relief to beat the crap out of stuff, but play songs while you do it. But right now, we're doing a bucket drumming unit. And so I have a bunch of like play-alongs on YouTube. And, yes, thank you, darling, sorry, my child. And sometimes like when I'm doing that, you know, like on YouTube, there's that side menu, and it'll show you like other videos you might want to watch. Sometimes when we're playing these play-alongs, the kids will be like, oh, can we do that song? And I'm like, sure, like, let's do it. But if I did that, you know, like on the fly, I could get a letter in my file because I didn't have it, you know, I didn't have it advertised on my whatever website a week in advance. So to think that like, they want the power to fire us over some, now, that doesn't mean that they would, but they could, and they will hold that over us to make sure we're doing every, it, it's not like they're, they're coming after us, you know, like specifically, it's just that they want that power. And that's part of what I mean when I say we're not burning out, we're being burned. It's just this constant surveillance. It's this feeling that we're not trusted as professionals. And I'm sorry, I have a master's degree. I'm about to complete, you know... And I'm sorry, I have a master's degree, I'm about to complete, you know, an additional graduate certificate. And like, we have to continuously educate ourselves and we are trained in, in professional standards and like. We're not trusted, we're not trusted, we're not treated as professionals, we're treated as babysitters and like. That curriculum transparency stuff is just part of it. It's just part of it.
Well, and it's like, you think about, you know, folks that, you know, when you went to school for teaching and even then, then God, when I went to school, kind of go through. Is that there was this certain kind of expectation, you're doing this, right? So that you're going to become kind of an expert or professional in your field. And there was a certain degree of support for that in our culture. I mean, it's never about a hundred percent, right? There's always been kind of contestatory stuff. But you know, this is like completely on like flipping things on their head. And I'm like. I want a teacher who's going to be, gonna be able to make decisions on the fly based upon what, you know, what's happening in the classroom and kind of follow up. I think about the number of times, for example, that I'm having say, say, I do these like small group conferences, right? And things come up in that small group conferences about what, you know, students are working on their research or whatever. And then the next day in class, I'm like, oh, we were talking about this thing. I thought this would be a good idea to show to everybody in class. So. We, um, here's this article or here's this thing or this little video that we're looking at addresses some of this stuff. And that's part of that, what makes classes dynamic. That's what makes education engaging. And to basically say to a teacher, first of all, to say that you're supposed to post all this stuff at the beginning of the year, that's just insane.
Yeah, it is. And, and like, look, I think all, all good teachers probably have some kind of outline of their curriculum. Some school districts are way better than others about having curriculum easily accessible to parents and whatever. Most, if not all, school districts already have policies on the books on how parents can access or challenge certain parts of those curriculum. And, and, and good, like, fine, if, if you need an outlet. Do that, like, that's fine. If you really feel strongly that your kids should not read a certain book, fine, but why do you get to decide that no kid can read that book? Or, you know, it's, it's like you said, like, we're just not treated as, as respected professionals. And it's frustrating because it's like, how many of you out there in my community are certified music teachers? You know what I mean? Like I went, I put myself through a crazy amount of schooling and I have a mountain of student debt so that I can. Pick, you know, classic bits and pieces, grade one half piece for fifth and sixth grade band, like. Uh, it's just, it's frustrating. And what other profession do you as, as a community member or a parent? Get to go in and tell other people what to do and how to do their job. Um, and maybe part of this is an entitlement issue, but so much of it has sprung up over the last couple of years. Because there's just this emboldened feeling of, well, we're getting away with it. So what else can we do? And it's frustrating and you can see it in the kids too.
You just made me think, so. One of the things that's kind of in this article too as well, um, I, I, I'm forgetting who. I don't think it was you mentioning, it was whether it was one of the other teachers that are mentioning, they're just kind of saying that. It is showing up in the kids too. It's showing up, I mean, we've seen the, the stress that the pandemic has put on this, but it's also changed. Say behavior in the classroom, um, or in schools. Um, in ways that are different, right? I mean, again, kids are going to express things in a variety of different kinds of ways, right? It's not like school are always problem free or something like this, but. That, that's having a kind of a discernible impact on what's happening in the classroom. And it's, I mean, are you seeing that too as well? Are you seeing that among colleagues? Are you seeing that kind of more broadly in kind of education across the state of the country?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a little tricky to, to put your finger on. I don't want to make a blanket statement that. All behaviors amongst children are, are bad, you know, like, I don't think that's the case. I think what we're witnessing right now is a trauma. On all of us and very different responses to that trauma. And not only from the pandemic, but from what learning at home has been. I have an only child. And so he spent a very long time not around any other children and missing out on many months of what. Normal, you know, like childhood development should include and how to interact with your peers and how to be respectful and how to be. You know, how to just function in school and as, as often as I rail against, you know, maybe some of the. Organizational structures of education and how we still kind of. Expect kids to learn the way we wanted them to learn during the industrial revolution, like, don't get me started on that stuff. You know, there's a lot.
Academic capitalism, book one.
Seriously, there's a lot wrong with the structures of our schools. Um, and I think any teacher would tell you that. I think it's hard to pinpoint exactly like, you know, like one issue. I don't want to say all behavior, but I do definitely. Want to lift up the fact that we are all kids and adults dealing with this trauma in one way or another. And so. Maybe kids are having different behaviors, but I think we as, as educators and school professionals are also having maybe slightly different reactions to those behaviors. Because we're under eight hundred million other stressors and we don't have enough staff. And if one more person tells me to practice self-care, I'm going to punch them in the throat.
Thank you for saying that.
You know, and I feel like the kids feel that too. Like, of course we say things like. We want rigor, we want to have high expectations for our students and at the same time. We want our students to function as human beings and we want them to know that we love and respect and care for them. And sometimes it's hard to balance what administration wants you to do, like. They want us to have high standards and of course we want to expect a lot from our kids, but we're not ready to say. Everything needs to be at the level it was before the pandemic, like. A lot of us are just not there where we're ready to push our kids that much because we see how much they're still struggling. With what used to feel normal and now seriously, just like going through adolescence is hard enough. I teach middle school, like, middle school is not easy even in the best of times. And so. Having all these extra stressors, knowing that we don't have enough mental health supports for our kids. Not only are they having behavioral issues that might be a little different, but we're having a different reaction to it as well. And I think it's just. It would be interesting if there are people kind of doing research on that, on that topic. I don't know what that would even look like, but.
No, that's, I mean, that's a great point. And I think that, you know, what you just said there about standards too as well, I also think. I'm wondering if, you know, if we're starting to see some, say, cracks in a long history of the what, the way that we talk about standards in. Public education, but the argument that, I shouldn't say arguments, not an argument, it's kind of like more an exchange, I should say. When I get very frustrated when I hear, uh, you know, you see these articles that are coming out about this, you're hearing this from our local school administrators, you're seeing this. And it creeps up in kind of statewide legislation too as well. You talk about like learning loss, right? And that we want to be rigorous and basic kind of standards. And I keep on, all I can think about is like. We just went through a, a pandemic. And to talk, you know, these kids, and I talk about, I say this to my kids all the time too, and said, look. These kids have just gone through something that none of us have ever gone through. And they've developed skills and habits that none of us have, that they had to do this when they were kids. What would it look like to talk about high standards for dealing with that? But that gets us into precisely this stuff that is being attacked in some of this legislation, like the social emotional learning. Like even the kind of stuff where you're talking about DEI initiatives, where you're attempting to kind of, let's look at kids for who they are. And make sure that they have a space within these schools, right? And think about learning in those terms. Instead, we just see this re, this like. Willful reassertion of like the PSEAs and, or not, yeah, the, the PSSA, sorry, the PSSA, sorry. Like I confused the union and the test, that's weird. That's another show. But, uh, and that's, uh, you, you know, to see this reassertion of this, you know, of this, this rubric that doesn't seem fit for where we're at today. Um, and it seems to me that, you know, I mean, this, what is it? Like the, the NEAs, uh. This was just crazy, the NEAs report that came out said, uh, what, fifty-five percent was it? Fifty-five percent of teachers are looking for leaving. Right? Are considering leaving, um, their professions and I, I, some of it has got to be part of those. Policies that pre-existed COVID. Right? That teachers have been rushing to try to kind of get on top of and still maintain some semblance of. The school as a place of learning, not as just kind of a machine to grind kids through. And it seems to me that that may be something that's here on the horizon is like, we look forward, what the hell are we actually doing to our kids?
Yeah. So like I said, finishing this education policy certificate, and this has been my entire school year, has been wrestling with all of these, you know, I'm a music teacher. Ask me my opinion on standardized tests, you know, like what are you going to standardize tests to, how to hold your murder tube and ban like? This is not, this is not a thing that I find particularly valuable. And I also would like to just lift up that when people are talking about learning loss. Look at who's talking and, and try to read between the lines because I think what a lot of these folks are talking about is not learning loss. It's talking about test score loss. Because all they understand is test scores and this percentage isn't high enough. And I personally would like to see us move away from thinking that scores on a PSSA. Have anything to do with what these kids have actually learned this year because it doesn't, it just doesn't. And I'm not saying that all standardized testing is terrible. I think it can, it can serve a useful purpose, but it's not right now in Pennsylvania. Um, again, I teach music, why should any part of my evaluation have anything to do with how a bunch of kids that I don't even teach? Perform on a test a couple of days in April, when we've just gone through a pandemic. Now, I'm not going to say learning loss is not a real thing. Um, I think there've definitely been a lot, again, of trauma and serious impacts. And I teach band, so like. My sixth graders right now have never had a normal band experience. They started out the year, they've never played a live concert. They've been playing, this is their third year and they've never had a concert. Now that, that is something that's going to be hard. It's going to take years, especially for music programs to recover from this because we, we literally couldn't rehearse, like what are we supposed to do? Um, so there is such a thing, I will say, as learning loss, but I don't look at it as, as them losing. Things they already knew. It's an opportunity loss and everybody is going through that, no matter what, right? It's very different. And so. I would just like for these conversations to have that framing, but they don't because it's test score loss and that's all these people care about.
You know, I look at things like, you know, you said, you teach music and why should this matter with standardized testing? But I also think about, you know, music programs, art programs, all these things that have been, say, cut or pushed aside in a lot of school districts. Right? Were precisely the things that I think that kids went to in many ways to deal with this trauma. Right? I mean, thinking about, say, music, about creativity, about these spaces that allowed kind of an expression. And you know, guess what? That's not something that's easy to test on us, you know, a kind of a fill in the, fill in the bubble, you know, multi-choice questionnaire.
Right. We're teaching them actual like life skills and how to connect with their culture and, you know, um. Culture is going to carry them much farther, no matter what they, these kids decide to do as a career or like, like, can we maybe get away from this idea that? Schooling exists just to train people to, to become human capital. That's not, that's not life, right? Yeah, okay, get a job, make some money so that you can eat, like, cool, but also society sucks. Maybe we could address that issue separately.
Yeah, eating's good, but we can do more. Bread and roses, everybody.
Yeah, exactly. And, and so what I do and, and what arts teachers in general and theater and like. Phys ed and sports, like we all connect people to their humanity. Um, and I don't think that should be measured on a standardized test because that would be bullshit and stupid. But like, if, if the people in the legislature could maybe understand that. The purpose of education should be for well-rounded individuals who can enjoy their existence, right? It's not all about how much money are they going to make for the state, right? But like, tell that to anybody in Harrisburg and it's just. It's all connected, you know, like I, I wanted to teach because I wanted to help kids and I wanted to run for office because I wanted to help kids. And now, you know, the second time I ran for office is because I wanted to help teachers. Because I see, you know, you can help kids by making sure their teachers have, have what they need. And now that I'm back in the classroom, it's just like, I've just completely doubled down on. You know, my life's work is going to be improving public education for teachers because. When you do that, it will improve things for the students. I can, you know, teach the best class ever, but if I'm not getting paid well enough and our school's falling apart, like. Are the kids going to remember that or are they going to remember that they're hungry? And my windows sound like demons when the wind blows. Um, I'm in a brand new building, by the way. And we're still dealing with like physical plant issues in a brand new building. Um, you know, like, but those are the things kids remember. They remember like. I don't know, are their physical needs being met? Do my teachers always look like they want to murder people or am I in a safe nurturing environment? And honestly. I don't know what kids are going to remember from this year, but I know what I'm going to remember and it's going to be stress. Lots of it.
I hear that. Well, okay, so I, as a kind of, I could talk, I could talk to you forever about this stuff. And, um, but I won't do that to you. You've got like, yeah, you've got a thousand and one things that I could never even imagine fitting into my day that you do.
Oh, but I want to correct the record. I was recently elected. As a Southern Region PSEA paste director. I was appointed, but then on Friday I was just elected, so I'm official.
Correcting the notes now.
I won another election, not just township auditor. Tried to keep me down York County, you tried, but you can't.
So, uh, like, on top of like being a teacher, which I can't imagine doing anything else at the end of the day, other than that. Like a full commitment that is for, for like your job. So you're also, I mean, obviously you've been kind of deeply involved in kind of revitalizing, uh, democratic politics. Um, kind of in, uh, the center part of the state, but really, I mean, beyond that, I mean, let's be, let's be real. I mean, um, it's about building a kind of, uh, networks of people, um, in particular, kind of getting kind of strong women to run. Um, making sure that we're getting rid of the kind of the old male white club that is dominating the fricking state legislature for way too long. And, and have built kind of, you know, structures and organizations, um, in kind of York County, which has just been. Astounding, um, that, that you've been part of building these things and, and people know that. Um, obviously, as you were appointed, I'm sorry, elected. But so let me ask you this as a way, kind of, kind of moving things, closing out for the night. It's like. You know, we're obviously, I'm not telling you anything new, but we're, we're facing, you know, a, a really significant midterm election that's coming up in the fall. And we're in a context which I think, you know, I, I think a lot of folks. On the say, I'll say left, but I mean that broadly, I mean, you know, kind of center to left, right? The kind of. General coalition of people who don't want to descend into authoritarianism. We'll, we'll start that. Even, well, not all those people, some, some people I said don't want that, but anyways. But, um, you know, I, I do think it's fair to say that a lot of folks are, have been exhausted. But there's been some pretty amazing organizing that's been happening at the school board level, um, and statewide level too as well. So I'm curious what your read is on things moving, um, kind of toward the fall. Like things that we should be paying attention to is kind of. You know, kind of legislation that you see that we need to watch out for, or really just some kind of organizing efforts that seem to be important. Um, or, you know, kind of as we move towards these midterm elections and beyond.
Yeah, um, I. My, my general take on the twenty twenty-two on all aspects of twenty-two, but especially this election is that everything sucks. I'm tired of it already. And oh my God, is this over yet? Um, and it's not even the primary, Kevin. And I'm already just like so checked out. The, the problem, and, and I know you were joking that like I do all these things and how do you have time? And the problem is I have to do all those things because I will feel like I am letting somebody down if I'm not doing those things. Because there aren't enough people doing these things. And I think we need to just have like a real come to Jesus moment. Um, as folks on the left about how much work this takes. And the people on the right may be idiots, but they're idiots who show up. And so they can whip a bunch of people to show up to a meeting and they can, they can do that better than we can right now. And that sucks. And I think we need to be like really open and honest about that. And it's hard to get people to show up to things because some of us have tiny children. And some of us work and we're involved in a million things and I work and I have a tiny child and I'm involved in a million things and I'm still. Doing those things because I am terrified about what will happen if I don't. And not that I have some kind of savior complex, I'm not doing this, like the Northern York Club. Has grown, we have like two hundred and sixteen paying members for a little club in Dillsburg, York County, like. Who the hell five years ago would have ever thought that was possible? Um, but it is because we, we do the work, you know, like we, we form this club, we have monthly meetings, we're knocking doors, we're making calls, we're. Doing the postal, like, we're doing the things all the time and we just need more people to be doing that. And it's, it's really hard to convince people that they need to get active, um, because it's easier to not. I, I know how much easier it is to just snark on Twitter because I do that too. But it's not enough. And I think people know that if. Look, I'm not like waving the I heart Josh Shapiro flag like a fangirl, but if he does not win, we are screwed. And so like, I need, I need more people to be participating in democracy right now with that attitude of like. We gotta get this guy elected and, and if he is not with us on some issues, we can push him, but you can't push. Dr. Oz, you can't push Doug Mastriano. I teach, by the way, in Doug Mastriano's district. And let me tell you how terrifying it is to see the signs, um, you know, I. People need to, people need to just like, look, bite off what you can chew. I'm not asking anyone to. Have the schedule that I have. You don't have to have your Google calendar look like mine because it's madness and it's hard to keep track of. And sometimes I think my husband wants to strangle me because I do too many things and I get it. But like, if people aren't doing the things, the things don't get done and then we lose. And so like, I just want to stress, I know, I, he just gave me the side eye. I just want to stress that even if all you can do is one thing, do the freaking thing, like do the thing. Find the thing you can do and. Like, do the thing, find the thing you can do and do it, and then tell somebody else to do something too. Because as much as we want to sit around and complain about the party and how this isn't in good shape and why aren't we doing this? And why doesn't this structure exist? It's because people just haven't done it. And so it's not gonna get better if we don't do it. And so are party politics fun? No, they're not fun. But somebody's got to do it, because the best way for us to make change is within the structure that exists. As much as it would be super fun to just like, start a third party and like, you know, we can't do that, like, it's just not realistic. So if your county party sucks, take it over. And that was like a bit of an inside joke, because there are people who are saying that, um, I and the Northern York Dems are staging a coup and trying to take over Northern York County, to which I roll my eyes and say, with what time am I staging a coup?
Oh, Shanna, come on, we know you're lying right now. You know, it's a whole coup.
I'm taking over everything. Um, I mean, I was just elected Southern Region Pace Director, so I know it's all happening. But it's just like, it looks like we're taking over because we're actually doing shit. Like, imagine what world we could live in if people would just do shit, but but they don't. And I get it, people are busy, but when people are busy, Doug Mastriano wins the governor's mansion and we're all screwed. So, dear folks, find the thing you can do and please do it. Just please do something, because, I mean, the midterms are garbage, the Senate race is a mess. Um, everything sucks and I'm so tired of reading about it, because nobody's gonna be perfect, but seriously, whoever wins, people, just do the work, because if we don't do the work, it's gonna get a lot worse.
Right. And I think like, you know, to your point there, well, two things. One, I think the work that you have done out in York County has given a lot of other folks some guidance, um, too as well. And again, I don't mean to say this is all just Shanna, right? I mean, I know that, I mean, I'll be clear. I mean, I know you'd be the last person in the world that would say, yes, it is all just me. I mean, you're always shouting out people that you work with. The amazing folks that have have done that work out there to build that party up, right? And build up the organization from the ground up. So, I want to make sure I say that. So, but that's, that's given a lot, you know, especially in my neck of the woods, right? Here, I'm here in Bucks County, which is like, you know, fricking, you know, one of the many front lines and the kind of, you know, Q and on takeover of our school boards. Um, and but I tell you, the first signs, the first yard signs that went up, um, across the street for me were Doug Mastriano, right? And the whole cohort of of the folks that are getting funded by those things. And but at the same time, you know, they went through two cycles of school board elections dealing with some extremists. And now you've got a group of folks who are doing the kind of organizing that you're talking about, right? And I have are very clear-eyed about it. I've been very hopeful about this, actually, I have to say. This also in Central Bucks, um, area and Palisades District, where you have, you know, and again, once again, it's primarily women who did the organizing on the ground up and we know that they both, yes, let's lift that up and at the same time, recognize disparity at the same time, because those things could be true, both of those true at the same time. Um, and I, but I see, you know, the fruits of the running in those districts, um, and building organizations. And I have to say, and having to see the the major fails by the, uh, by the official Dem parties, um, kind of giving very, very bad, um, advice to school districts to kind of avoid C R T, to avoid any controversial issues, to kind of just talk about quality education, sank a lot of those campaigns that might have been able to pull out an additional seat or two. But but they know that, they learned the lessons and are building up for this. So I think that, you know, we can see that it's doable, but it does take time.
It does. And it also takes a certain amount of commitment to like, be authentic, you know? Um, I I've listened to the the episodes where you've you've talked to those candidates about those consultant type things. And luckily, we don't get a lot of consultants out here, because no one cares about us. But, um, but it's the same, you know, where like, the the powers that be will just leave them unnamed. Will tell you, you need to do X, Y, and Z to run a great campaign and you need to do, and like, things that just don't make sense, they're not practical here. Um, one of my favorite compliments about my Senate race was months after I lost, seeing someone comment on somebody else's Twitter feed about how I was the only candidate they were actually excited to vote for, because at least I said how I felt. And like, I just wish people would do that. Like, just say how you feel. Are are some of your ideas gonna not go over well with some people in your district? Sure, but you know what? They're gonna respect you for being authentic with how you feel. And and giving some, give people something to be excited about. Like, I'm so sick of, of people just like deferring to the the party platform. And it's like, look, if you believe that we need to do something like universal healthcare, or if you believe that we need to reform the way we fund our schools, go talk about that. Are some people's eyes gonna glaze over? Yeah, probably, but they're gonna remember how weirdly passionate you were about that totally niche thing no one's ever heard of. And then they're gonna like, go look into it, you know? Um, just, you know, like, run on shit that actually matters. Um, and please just like be yourself, please. And then also run for office. Oh, my God, we need you. Please run for office right now.
You know, I I haven't said this, uh, publicly very often, um, but, uh, so I I am now the judge of elections in my, on my ward. Because nobody was running. No. Um, and I was like, I would, I was looking, there was nobody running. I'm like, what? How could nobody run? And like, I have got this weird thing where I've also think, you know, on the one hand, I'm a partisan and a fighter and all this stuff. But I have a really deep commitment to democracy, right? Just the functioning of the democracy, right? And I've gotten off the phone with some people who have worked in this ward for a long time, and these people, all they care about is things going well. And to have a good experience, because we have, we haven't had the craziness in our particular little ward and these people are awesome. And so I was like, you know, at least I can approach that in that way. But I I feel like those are the kind of things that, you know, even if it's something like this, and I don't know what the frick I'm doing, right? No, exactly. And it's scary and it feels overwhelming and, but that's just it. And then you end up finding people, like, I got off the phone with this woman who had been the the judge of elections for a long time, and she was just amazing. Just wanted to be helpful and wanted to build a connection. And she says, you know what's the best part about this job? You get to meet your neighbors.
Yes, that's right. That's why everyone should be a precinct committee person or, you know what I mean? Like, seriously, it starts small, but I couldn't necessarily tell you the names of the people that live on my street, but I could tell you, like, that lady is married to this guy and they care about immigration, because he was born in another country. And I could tell you that these people have a kid and swimming and they really care about school funding and like, and I don't know their names, but I know their stories. You know, and that's more powerful. And and you don't have to run for state legislative office to have those experiences. Like, every single person listening should pick up a walk list and do some door knocking for Shapiro, not because he deserves a hero's reception, but because seriously, I don't even want to know what's gonna happen if he does not win. So like, go do that, just go. And even if it's just in your neighborhood, you know, the stories that you'll hear, it's really impactful. It makes a big difference.
Yep. And I'll just, uh, and to kind of bring it to close on that point too as well, where just like in that article from Marley Parish, it says, the only thing, the reason why we do not have a statewide legislation that is forcing teachers to put all their curriculum up online for a year ahead of time is because of of Governor Wolf's veto. And the only thing that is gonna protect a kind of a women's right to choose, the only thing that's gonna protect kind of like all sorts of like voting protections is to make sure that we at the very least have someone who's sitting in the governor's office that is gonna veto that kind of legislation.
A backstop. We absolutely need it.
One hundred percent. Well, Shanna, um, it's awesome talking to you as always. Um, and, um, I I know it it's is kind of, I've I've always, I tend to have this feeling when I, every time I talk to you too. It was like, on both ends, like, I share in the gloom, right, of how bad it are. But I also feel hopeful, right? Because I know that it's the, it's the mix of those things, right? And I, I mean, and if anybody has has demonstrated what can be done, right? With some effort and some will and for energy that I don't know where the hell you get it from, but seriously, yeah, coffee, yeah, well, there you go. Um, but seriously, thank you for all the work that you're doing. And listen, everybody should definitely be checking out Sisters of the Night Caucus Podcast. Um, make sure you subscribe to that wherever you get your podcasts. Follow them on Twitter, because it's awesome.
New episode drops on Wednesday, so.
Drop that, you took, so was there a couple of weeks off, right?
Yes, we took a mental health break last week. But we're back, we're back, don't worry. We will hex all the things and you can hear the saga about my backyard, which we didn't even get into on this episode, so.
No, I actually, I almost went there once, but I'm like, you know what? You don't deserve that.
But everyone can tune in to, uh, to this week's episode for the full rundown on other things I would like to punch in the face.
And get a little stabby with. Excellent. Well, definitely check that out. You drops on Wednesday, you said, right? Yep. Make sure you check that out, the new episode this Wednesday. Make sure you subscribe to Sisters of the Night Caucus Podcast. Make sure you follow Shanna Danielson on all the socia ls. Info on that you can find in tonight's show notes. Um, and Shanna, um, we're getting through it and, uh, thank you for the advice to just do the thing. And do the thing. All right, everybody, thank you for tuning in tonight and, uh, special thank you once again to Shanna Danielson and all the work that she's doing. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. I want to remind you that next week, that will have a show yet to be announced. Um, we'll see what we got going on. And then in two weeks, we'll have Daisy Pickin on to talk about her new book, On the Line. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. You can help support this show. Head on over to patreon.com slash R C Press. Become a member today, everybody. Let's do the thing. Pick the thing, do the thing.